Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to City Council Meeting this evening. We will begin our meeting with the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation is Father Ron Zanoni. Is Father Ron? Please come up to the podium, sir. Please rise.
This invocation is really more of a blessing. It's titled "The Year Ahead." May God make our year a happy one, not by shielding us from all sorrows and pain, but by strengthening us to bear it as it comes; not by making our path easy, but by making us sturdy to travel it; not by taking hardships from us, but by taking fear from our heart; not by granting us unbroken sunshine, but by keeping our face bright even in the shadows; not by making our life always pleasant, but by showing us when people need us most; and by making us anxious to be there to help. God's love, peace, joy, and hope to us all for the year ahead. Amen.
Okay, we will move to public announcements. Before we do, I know we've had a few of the 4th graders come up to get their agenda signed for their Nevada citizenship. Are there any others that did not get theirs signed? All right, the ones that are here, if you would stand, we'll make sure that we have you on camera. Thank you, and great work on working on that project. And for public announcements, Gar Jameson.
City Council, thank you. I am the co-founder of Children's Advocacy Alliance, and I want to thank you for your encouragement and your support for the Healing Center here in Boulder City. 1998, the Southern Nevada Children's Home was shut down by the state of Nevada due to lack of funding. It was a horrible moment, and out of those ashes came the Children's Advocacy Alliance. Ever since that time, we've been looking for a home for these young girls and young boys who have been trafficked. And so I just want to say thank you for the work that's been put in by the Planning Commission. I want to say thank you to the City Council. I think this will be a legacy of this City Council that will go on for years. And what I can tell you, working with the Children's Advocacy Alliance, as wonderful as it is having the sporting teams coming to Southern Nevada, there is a traffic of young individuals who are the consequence of a lot of those events. So again, from the bottom of my heart and from the Board of the Children's Advocacy Alliance, God bless you and thank you.
Thank you. I do have two others listed here for public comment. If you are wanting to speak on an agenda item, we will get to public comment in just a moment for that. But Ms. Bachhuber, if you had a public announcement, please come up.
Good evening, Mayor McManus and Council members. I am a member of Nevadans for the Common Good, and the group that operates in Boulder City or members that are in Boulder City, about two years ago, were looking for a project that we felt would be positive and impactful to Boulder City residents and would have, hopefully, a chance of success. So after looking around, we began working to have power-assisted doors installed at the post office. With those doors, it will improve accessibility for a large segment of our residents, especially people with mobility issues, people, anybody who uses a cane, a walker, a wheelchair, or even somebody with an armful of packages, like during Christmas. And I can tell you, as a volunteer for Lendehand, that anybody in a wheelchair who is attempting to get through the first two doors of the post office, and then if they want to see a clerk, they've got to go through another set of doors, face a real challenge. Where we are at this point in time with this project, we will soon be opening a case with the, let me get the title right, the United States Access Board. And this board enforces accessibility standards at federal buildings, including post offices. In order to strengthen our case, we have begun circulating a petition of support within the community. In that regard, members of the organization will be at the Credit Union this Friday from 9:30 to 5:30 with a petition and asking for support and for signatures and to answer any questions. There also will be the, the petitions will be available within town at several churches, Rotary Club, Lendehand, Emergency Aid, the assisted living facilities, and so forth. So anybody in the community who would like to sign this petition will be able to find a place to do so. We're hoping that, excuse me, with enough support, this will strengthen our case and with the demonstration of need, that we will be successful in making an impact positively on residents of Boulder City. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like, is it Mike Weatherford?
Yes. Hi, I'm actually up here for the same thing Phyllis just talked to you about. I didn't know if we should have come up together, but I'll try to be as not redundant as possible. I would just add that we have been told no by the Postmaster General.
Before you start, could you just repeat your name again?
Sure, it's Mike Weatherford. I'm here on behalf of Nevadans for the Common Good, and we are a valley-wide advocacy group with a Boulder City cluster drawing its membership from three churches here in town, and two of those pastors are here at this meeting. So yeah, just to get back to that, Phyllis said it well, I won't try to repeat it too much, but we have been told no by the Postmaster General, so this petition is kind of a two-pronged attack. It's not a binding petition like an election where the signatures are verified like they would be for a ballot question. We're just using it to back up that formal complaint to the Access Board that she talked about and to reinforce any effort by Congresswoman Susie Lee, who has taken interest in trying to push for the doors. So we hope to be out in the front of the Credit Union the next three Fridays, and you may see us at a meeting of your civic group or some local merchants around town between now and the end of the month. In the meantime, thanks, and don't forget to hold the doors for people on walkers or with packages.
Thank you. All right, we will now move to public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person has up to five minutes to speak on a specific agenda item. Is there anyone wishing to speak in public comment?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. You're getting to hear from Nevadans for the Common Good a lot this evening.
And if you would just state your name, please.
Right. My name is Barbara Paulson. I am a resident in Boulder City and have been a member of Nevadans for the Common Good since it began in 2012. We're an organization of organizations. We have 42 member institutions across the valley, and as Mike mentioned, three of those are the Boulder City United Methodist Church, St. Andrews Catholic Community, and St. Christopher's Episcopal Church in Boulder City. And the purpose of our organization is to bring diverse people and organizations together, to build relationships, find common ground, and act in nonpartisan ways to affect change that strengthens families and communities. We've done a number of things specific in Boulder City to bring additional pantry resources to the city and also additional funding for the Meals on Wheels program. Tonight, I want to speak in support of Resolution 7053, which addresses the addition of six residential group homes plus related facilities at St. Jude's. We are in strong support of development of the Healing Center there at St. Jude's. Nevadans for the Common Good, as I said, came into existence in 2012, and its first action was to successfully advocate for the passage of AB 67 in the 2013 legislative session. AB 67 was Nevada's first comprehensive anti-human tracking legislation, making it harder for predators to traffic vulnerable children and adults, and it also significantly increased jail time for convicted offenders, particularly those who trafficked minors. Although AB 67 was a big step forward in addressing the crime of sex trafficking, Nevada is woefully lacking in facilities and programs to provide comprehensive treatment for the victims of sex trafficking and sex exploitation, particularly programs for children. We often talk about minors being trapped in this insidious and predatory industry, but minors is kind of a cold legal term. What we're really talking about is children. We're talking about our children, no matter where they came from, they are all our children, who have experienced traumas that most of us probably can't even imagine, and are going to need tremendous support and care for them to rebuild their lives and go on to have a good future. How we respond to this need of these young people tells something about the values of our community. These children need that special care that this Healing Center will be able to provide in their lives. We must provide this for them. It's the right thing to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
This is something new for me. My name is Philip Thomas. I live in Blue Lake Track, adjacent to the facility she's just been speaking about. Nobody in that track has a problem with what they're trying to do. It's how they're trying to do it. It affects us financially, safe, we're concerned about our safety. We have women live there that are single. We have very few kids there, but we do have kids. There is no reason at all for that facility to be built within 150 to 200 feet of our track when they have all the acreages they have. Now, they're trying to change the master plan, which you're all aware of. When I bought my house, I asked what was going to happen with that property. The broker and the developer came to the city, provided me with a plan that showed sports facilities adjacent. Fine, great, no problem at all. We have no problem with St. Jude's. We have a problem with it being adjacent to our houses. My wife, is there alone a lot? Right now, we go to the front door at 7:00, 8:00, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night, somebody knocks on it, you open it, because you know who it is. It's a neighbor. Nobody gets in our backyard. We walk out, we go to take our trash at night when it's dark. If the facility is where it is, at some point, there will be a problem. Not every day, but there will be a problem. And when they come over that fence, they're going to come into our property. It's the only place to go. There's nowhere else. If they want to hide, they're going to hide in my backyard. If they're scared, they're going to beat on the front door. My wife's going to open the door, and other people are the same way. If the people that have sponsored them and the reason they're there come to get them, the only place they can work is from our track. It's totally dark. You can't see them from the house. If a car parks on Blue Lake, we can't see it. It is very unfair for the city to even consider approving that in the conditions and in the plan that it is. We're not against it. When they have all the other property and they're eliminating all those buildings, it should be pushed up. Now, their own statements are, it's not compatible to other people. Are we other people? Certainly we are. Please take in consideration to defer it and get it redesigned. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please state your name.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Fred Volz. These comments pertain to both Agenda Items 9 and 12B. And the questions we need to be asking tonight are, is it outright fraud? Is it gross incompetence? Or is it calculated indifference? Despite multiple public notices, we still do not know the whereabouts of $20-plus million in utility ratepayer money appropriated by prior city councils for utility capital improvement projects. This lingering question has not been satisfactorily answered since it was first raised last summer. The city manager had a prime opportunity to resolve this unreconciled money when the external auditors were generating the fiscal year 2019 financial report during the last half of calendar year 2019. He did nothing. In addition, the city's auditors, Hinton Burdick, failed to probe for or discover any irregularities in utilities' capital spending by conducting even a customary spot check at individual capital project spending. The city manager was clearly aware of the irregularities from prior public comments at the Utilities Advisory Committee and City Council, yet chose to say and do nothing. Boulderites endured the same slipshod management when the city's recent five-year capital improvement plan executive summary contained multiple arithmetic errors that should have been caught by the most casual competency with a computer spreadsheet. Instead, it took someone from the public to go through the presentation over multiple versions to highlight all the errors present and absent explanatory footnotes. Even the utility rate consultant, Ref Tellis, whom the city manager chose without first consulting the Citizen Utilities Advisory Committee, has thus far ignored the $20-plus million discrepancy in attempting to come up with accurate new utility rate recommendations. Should the city manager finally choose to propose a timely, specific solution for the unreconciled $20-plus million during his comments on Agenda Items 9 and 12B tonight, that would certainly be welcomed and appropriate rather than continuing to intentionally ignore the issue. Serious problems do not disappear on their own. Of course, if the city manager wants to write a $20-plus million personal check to make up the difference to ratepayers, that would quickly resolve the issue. For inclusion with the official record of this meeting, I will submit a spreadsheet that starkly lays out the failures in the city manager's oversight of this material amount of money based on data issued by his Utilities Department over several months. If, however, the city manager stubbornly chooses to take no action, then as overseers, the City Council should add to its next agenda potential direct employment bypassing any involvement by the city manager of a forensic accountant to figure out what the city manager and his handpicked department managers failed to do over his two years of city employment. Forensic accountants probe financial problems and irregularities, then come up with findings and action steps going forward. I also ask that in addition to the spreadsheet, my comments tonight be added verbatim to the official record of this City Council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else asking or wanting to speak in public comment?
Hello, my name is Marion Vence, M-A-R-I-A-N-V, like in Victor, I-N-C-E. I am president of the Blue Lake Homeowners Association. We have 20 homes, so we're a small homeowners association, and we are the ones that are affected the most. I'm speaking on Item Number 7 for the St. Jude's proposal. Our property is probably the most affected by it. I spoke, you know, at the Planning Commission meeting, and also last, it was in, I think the first started in like in August of 2018. St. Jude's had some informational meetings. They sent out, I think, notices to all our homeowners in Blue Lake and also to the homeowners in Belavista. And it was very informational. They wanted to hear our input. They had a different architect than, that came to the Planning Commission meeting, and they were very interested in our input. We talked about our concerns. I think they decided, they said, well, we'll make it one-story instead of two-story, because it's actually uphill, so it's going up, so you actually look up into these places. But then they talked about our wall, or the wall is actually owned by St. Jude's, and it's a six-foot wall, but it's not really six-foot. I mean, I'm 5'9", and I can look over the wall. It's in pretty bad shape, too, that it's deteriorated. It really needs to be fixed. But, you know, they asked us about, do you want it to be taller? Do you want it to be made different type of material? They offered to do another wall, like at the edge of their facility, and then have like a no-man's land, and then our wall. And all these things were talked about, and we thought we were making pretty good progress, and then they stopped. They didn't have any more meetings, and we had heard that they lost funding and the whole issue was dead. We never heard another thing until it came up with the meeting, the letter that came to us for the meeting at the Planning Commission last month. Excuse me. So we, you know, our objection is not to the facility itself, it's just to the location, because it's right on the other side of the wall. We would, we don't really have a realistic expectation that this is not going to get approved, but what we're really asking for is for, you know, the St. Jude's people to maybe reach out and work with us, because we have a lot of really good ideas and things that maybe they haven't thought about that we'd like to interject that could maybe make a happy relationship, because we're, like I said, we're going to be the ones that are affected the most by it. And, you know, we're concerned about, you know, the wall itself, maybe double walls, heights of walls, you know, everything that's made that way, and the access that's in there. Right now, they have a hole in their wall that gives access to come out to our section right now, anyway. Security-wise, you know, maybe things that they hadn't really thought of. I just recently retired as a police officer for about 36 years, and so I have a lot of input that I'd like to add to it. I've been a long time, I've been in Boulder City for 40 years. My husband's family's been here since 1950. I've been a big part of this community. The, as I look around here, the people that have been here the longest, you know, have worked with me a lot, so I'm really easy to work with, and I just wish that St. Jude's would work with us and take into account our input, because we'd like to have some say in it, maybe some things that they hadn't thought about before, you know, something that we can bring up to them. So that's really it. Like I said, I just want to say, our homeowners association is against it, but not the facility itself, just the location of it. There's a lot of property at St. Jude's, and all this stuff is up at the top, and then there's a whole lot of area, and then this is down at the very bottom. We just wish it was moved up a little bit. So that's really about it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Ms. DeShane?
Judy DeShane, it was just something I noticed when I was reading through the 1,000-page code thing, and I will admit I skipped some of it, but the part I noticed the most was the fact that all the dates that are at the beginning, they show a year of 2019, and also for council members, Councilwoman Hoskins is not on that list. It still so shows Warren Harhey, and although I wish he were here, he's not, so I think it needs to be corrected, and I think those years need to reflect 2020. Unfortunately, 2019 is gone, and in some respects, I'm glad to see it gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing no others, we'll close public comment, and we'll move to the approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk? Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
Thank you. Bring it back to Council. Any changes? Councilman Adams?
Yeah, I would like to ask that we remove Item Number 11, I'm sorry, Item Number 10 from tonight's agenda item. It is less to do with the subject matter, but more specifically how the item was written, being that it specifically states that we consider the appointment of our city manager. Being that we're not required as a body to appoint that specific individual, if anybody on this council would like to discuss the potential for appointing another member, I believe that this as written would prevent us from even having that discussion, and so for that reason, I would like to ask that we remove it.
Mr. City Manager? I believe it's your item.
It is my item. The reason that's four is because that committee has either other city managers or county manager as primary or as alternate. It's only appropriate that we have the same level of representation from the city on that committee.
Any discussion by the Council on Mr. Adams' request?
I'll just add that if everybody else is comfortable with moving forward, that's fine. I just did want to point out that if there were any of us who did want to have that discussion of potentially appointing somebody else, I don't believe that we can even have that discussion, so.
All right, I think you'd need to put it in the form of a motion then to adopt the regular agenda with the removal of Item Number 10, if you wish to make that motion.
If there are no other comments about this agenda, I will make an emotion to approve the agenda with the removal of Item Number 10.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, regular agenda is approved then. Move to the approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk, any changes?
Yes, Mayor, I'm asking the Council to remove Item 1A, and I will bring that back at the January 28 meeting, please.
That's the approval of the minutes from the November 18 meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
No for the changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No for the changes.
Okay, we'll bring it to Council then. Any other changes to the consent agenda? All right, I will move then that we will approve the consent agenda with the removal of 1A.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will then move to Item Number 1B, or excuse me, to the approval of the consent agenda. Okay. Our next item on the regular agenda then will be Item Number 4. This is a bill introduction, 1866. Anyone wishing to introduce that?
I move that we introduce. I move. I move that to introduce Bill Number 1866 as stated.
Bill Number 1866, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, Nevada, to amend Title 11, Chapters 11 and 13 of the city code to allow ornamental iron fabrication businesses as a conditional use in the C-2 general commercial zone and list them as a permitted use in the CM commercial manufacturing zone AM-19-344. Bill 1866 will be considered at the January 28, 2020 regular City Council meeting.
Thank you. Item Number 5 is introduction of Bill Number 1867. Anyone wishing to introduce that bill?
I'd like, I'd like to introduce Bill Number 1867 by title only, waive the reading.
Bill Number 1867, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, Nevada, for codifying and compiling the general ordinances of Boulder City, adopting and enacting a new code for the city of Boulder City, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing a penalty for the violation thereof, providing for the manner of amending such code, and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become effective. Bill 1867 will be considered at the February 11, 2020 regular City Council meeting.
Thank you. We will move now to Item Number 6. This is the Bill Andrews Award for this year. I am pleased to announce the winner of this year's Bill Andrews Award. The award was established by City Council to recognize individuals who make a difference in the community. Past award winners have been Teddy Fenton, Vern and Darlene Burke, Carol Jeffries, Jack Edwards, Ralph and Sarah Denton, Bob Ferraro, Judge Victor Miller... Edwards, Ralph and Sarah Denton, Bob Ferraro, Judge Victor Miller, and Phil Esser, to name a few. This year's winners are Phyllis and Fred Bachhuber. The person who nominated the Bachhubers said the following. Phyllis and Fred have been volunteering for Lendahand for the past 15 years. Phyllis is currently on the board after serving two terms as president. She established an annual fundraiser that helped establish an endowment, giving Lendahand peace of mind in the years to come. She has also helped our local Meals on Wheels and emergency aid in previous years. Fred is on the advisory board of Lendahand and is spearheading a committee to find a new location for the organization. Fred also continues to drive clients to and from the appointments. He previously served on the board of the Boulder Dam Museum as well. They personally furnished one of the rooms in the Boulder Dam Hotel during its renovation, excuse me, furnished, not provided. They have been both sponsors and volunteers of the Dam Short Film Festival, Chautauqua, and many other events in Boulder City. Phyllis and Fred, please join me and accept the token of appreciation on behalf of myself, the city council, and Boulder City residents. Well, again, you can step up here and face the camera like we have to do. Again, I've known both Phyllis and Fred for a number of years now. They seem to have no limit to the amount of energy they have in doing things in Boulder City. So again, on the behalf of myself, the city council, and the city of Boulder City, this is heavy, so I'll give you that heads up. And again, is there anything that you would like to say?
Well, both Phyllis and I are very proud volunteers with Lendahand of Boulder City. Lendahand is an absolutely critical organization, which makes life for many of our seniors and handicapped much more pleasant. We feel a little uncomfortable standing up here, to be quite honest with you. We would accept this kind of recognition only in the context that Boulder City is filled with the wonderful volunteers, and if we didn't have these volunteers, this city would not be as good as it really is. So we accept this award for all of the people that are volunteering, especially the volunteers for Lendahand and the $1 million endowment fund that goes along with the award. Thank you.
We may need to talk about that dollar amount. Phyllis, is there anything you'd like to say?
Thank you for this award. Volunteering is easy, or you have to be careful, though, not to overcommit. It is, makes me feel such a part of the city, so thank you.
Again, I want to thank both of you for all your efforts. I know you contribute to many things in the community, so again, thank you. Phyllis, thank you. As I said, the dollar amount that was mentioned, we may need to verify that with our city manager before we commit to that, but. All right, we will move now to item number seven, Resolution 7053, Mr. Mays.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Michael Mays, you're Community Development Director. In 1967, they sold 39 acres to St. Jude's Ranch for Children for the development of institutional-related uses. And I just wanted to thank you. Put that on the screen, as you can see, north of Highway 93 is the 32 acres in question. The development of the ranch is governed by a sales agreement, which stipulated review by the Planning Commission and the city council to ensure compliance with the original sales agreement, and that has manifested itself into a master plan that has been amended over time. I just want to pause for a second to explain what the master plan means. It is not the city's master plan, the document that is approved by the city council that regulates all long-range land uses for the community and helps for the long-term vision of the community. This is a specific master plan to these 39 acres, and so that's what I will be referring to with my presentation. St. Jude's previously received master plan approval from the city. The last point was in 1997, which showed for the remaining 10 acres that had not been developed, a gym, fieldhouse, parking lot, baseball diamond, and track and field. St. Jude's is now proposing to move forward with their project called the Healing Center Campus. It would contain six homes, a multipurpose and therapy building, and an administrative building. The use is consistent with the institutional and related uses that was contemplated in the original agreement. Because the Healing Center Campus is a modification, however, it does require an update to the 1997 master plan. On December 18th, 2019, the Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval of St. Jude's requested amendment. Christina Vella, the chief executive director of St. Jude's Ranch for Children, is here to provide a presentation to the city council regarding the project and to answer any questions. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Christina.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, for the record, Christina Vella. Thank you for having me this evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Let me make sure, push the arrow. Okay. Oh, there we go. Okay. As mentioned, for over 50 years, St. Jude's Ranch for Children is proud to be a longstanding member of the city of Boulder City, and has provided hope and healing to thousands of children that are victims of abuse and neglect. All of the children that have been served at St. Jude's Ranch for Children have experienced an array of complex trauma. And over the years, St. Jude's Ranch for Children has continued to develop its programs in response to a community need. So an example is on our campus, we have a specialized pregnant and parenting teen program. That program is for children that are living in foster care and are in need of specialty services because they are a teen mother with a brand-new baby, and our goal is to break the cycle of abuse and neglect for them by mending their spirits and helping that young mother recognize how important it is for her to provide a safe and caring environment for her child. That's one example of how St. Jude's Ranch for Children has continued to be responsive to the needs of our community and, in general, Southern Nevada. Over the previous years, St. Jude's Ranch for Children has been in many community conversations about a growing need to care for child victims of sex trafficking. I appreciate that many leaders and many community members are recognizing that child sex trafficking is indeed a huge concern for Southern Nevada, for Boulder City, for Las Vegas, for, you know, really across our state, and quite honestly, across the country. In response to needing to provide an alternative for children is how this healing center came about. As one point of clarification, today, if law enforcement was engaging with a young victim of sex trafficking, there is only one alternative for where that police officer is to take that child, and it is the juvenile detention facility. We believe, along with many other individuals, that that sends all of the wrong messages about who is to blame for the victimization of that child. The trafficker and the buyer of the sex are much more responsible, yet because of no alternative, the children go to the detention facility and are not in an environment to help them heal, or really begin the healing process, or quite honestly, to talk about the exploitation that they have experienced. Taking into account St. Jude's Ranch for Children's over 50-year history of providing hope and healing for children, we decided that we would have the courage to stand with these victims and create the first-of-its-kind healing center totally dedicated to caring for child victims of sex trafficking. What you have in front of you is a visual rendering of the healing center. As previously mentioned, we have hosted two informational sessions of our own desire to connect with the closest thousand households to the St. Jude's Ranch for Children property. We sent out two different meeting notices encouraging members to come and hear about the needs of child sex trafficking victims and our plans at St. Jude's Ranch for Children. At both meetings, we had representatives from the same architecture firm, LGA, who continues to be our architect of record and who has provided the renderings that you have in front of you. I'll show you a couple things. I know this might not be so easy to see, but the healing center will be on those furthest 10 acres that were referenced previously. What's interesting about the land of those 10 acres, which currently is undeveloped, other than for the bunnies, the periodic coyotes, and lots of dust, nothing else benefits from that land. Interestingly enough, that land is actually, has a ridge and is much lower than our existing campus, and we anticipate maintaining that lower elevation so as to create a very nurturing environment for the healing center. The neighbors that are adjacent to us, the homeowners that, you know, are adjacent, you know, closest to that wall, actually sit, will sit a little bit higher than even the healing center homes. On the campus, what we are proposing is an administrative main visitor building that is the only entry point for any visitors that are coming to the campus. We will be using the use of technology for security, as we currently do even on our existing part of our campus, to make sure that all of the children and the staff that we care for and provide for are safe and secure. The administration building will also have a small set of emergency shelter beds, so that at any given time when law enforcement reaches out to us, we are able to respond and divert a young person from having to go, from having to go to the juvenile detention facility, but rather to be able to come directly to the healing center and immediately start the services that is needed. Additionally, there will be a multipurpose building, and in that building will be an onsite school. We recognize that we will need to help these young people get re-acclimated to a normal sleep schedule and, you know, get them reconnected to credits. They are likely credit deficient and not been going to school on a regular basis, so having an onsite school, a tutor lab, computer lab, and then other space such as a yoga and meditation room, a physical fitness room, and a clinical building where there will be some therapy offices. What we're really proud of is the beauty of the healing center. There are a lot of walking trails and space for young people to be outside for maybe some art therapy or meditation. Similar to the programs that we currently offer on our campus, we encourage our children to go outside and to learn how to play and enjoy, you know, the beautiful, clean air of Boulder City. Additionally, there will be six homes. Three homes are up to four bedrooms, and the additional three homes will be up to six bedrooms. We anticipate leveraging our 50-year history of providing residential care to children while enhancing this with specialized treatment and services. We are an accredited organization by the Council on Accreditation, one of very few in Southern Nevada. We are licensed by Clark County Department of Family Services, Clark County Juvenile Services, and the Division of Child and Family Services, and Washoe County Social Services. All of those partners are in great, have provided great response about continuing to partner with St. Jude's, and quite honestly, people are asking me all the time, how quickly will the healing center be open, because there are young people today that are sitting in the detention facility with no alternative. I will go past this a little bit to just show the aerial rendering. Some important things to note is that we, at a minimum, at the Planning Commission, we agree that at a minimum, the closest building will be 150 feet away from the adjacent walls, and we will be using a fence-withan-a-fence strategy, as well as a lot of desert landscaping. We've told other neighbors that we promise no two-story buildings and no really high-growing trees. We recognize that people do absolutely appreciate their beautiful view of Lake Mead, and we have no intention of obstructing that for anyone. We absolutely recognize that the current wall structure that is there will need to be replaced and strengthened. It has been there for quite some time. This is a rendering of the larger home. That is, this home will have six bedrooms. You can see it even has an indoor courtyard, which we think would be a lovely added touch for the young people that are living there. We anticipate using beautiful desert landscaping. That's the inside of the courtyard. This is the smaller of the two homes. This will be a four-bedroom home. Now, the inside of the homes will include a large kitchen and a dining room, because providing a home environment is exactly what these young people need. It is not meant to be an institution. There will not be barbed wire. There will not be armed patrol, you know, driving around. What we recognize is the need for use of technology for security, and so there will be one gated entrance onto the campus that will be controlled by access cards and/or entry onto the campus through the main administration building, so ensuring that we always know who's on our campus. Our current campus part, we have cameras in lots of places that our visitors would never know, and so we would continue to do that, just to make sure that we always have eyes and ears on what is happening on the campus. And I think that is the, that's even the backyard. We are anticipating just really developing the entire space so that there's a lot of opportunity for our residents and our staff to spend quality time helping young people, primarily with two main focus of helping them have a greater sense of hope and an incredible amount of healing to overcome the heinous crime of child sex trafficking. And with that, I'm willing to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council?
I had one.
Councilwoman Holder?
So I know, it looked like in the renderings, at least, each house had a garage attached to it.
Yes.
Can you explain that? Because most of the occupants will not be using vehicles, is that correct?
Correct. None of the residents will have vehicles. The vehicles are for the house, for the house use. Every house gets assigned a van, and if they'll be going off-campus, you know, going on a trip or going out to the movies, we appreciate the home-like nature of being able to come into the driveway and even pull into the garage so that on a hot summer's day, you know, the car is protected. It's just that extra added home feature.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hoskins?
Yes, you have been my neighbors for over 16 years, and you've done a great job with the children. And so with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve 7053. I second.
Okay. Prior to that, I think we may have further discussion. Councilman Adams?
Just a quick question. You mentioned that there are already children that are waiting, hoping for this to be approved and can't wait. What is life like for those who are fortunate enough to have found themselves free of this trafficking but are unable to receive the treatment and therapy needed to kind of help begin the healing process? What is life like for those individuals?
Again, Christina Vella, for the record, unfortunately, when young people do find themselves being able to find a way to exit that life, very quickly, they find themselves either experiencing homelessness or... that life, very quickly, they find themselves either experiencing homelessness, or if part of their trafficking was done through their family, there is an incredible amount of familial trafficking that makes it really hard for children to return back to their home of origin or their parents' home. And so quite honestly, in speaking with survivors and survivor advocates, most young people do not feel safe enough to leave the life, because they know they have very little alternatives of where to go. In the community, there are some case management services and things that help young people recognize that they have alternatives, but short of this program, there's still no physical place for young people to be able to go and safely receive the services that they need.
And if there were any members of our community out there who are listening, who may have questions or are interested in some of those resources, what are the best ways that they can find those resources?
Yes, thank you for that question. We have information on our website at stjudersranch.org, and there is a tab there about the healing center, which provides more information about what we intend to do, as well as on our website about how folks can get help if anybody is in need. And certainly, with your blessing to move forward tonight, we continue to have a commitment to talking to the community and gaining more feedback about how we might, you know, make this the best project possible.
And then I will just add that I cannot think of a better community in Southern Nevada than to provide the supportive environment that is needed to begin the healing process. I think Boulder City's community is really just that. It really does thrive in supporting one another, so I can't think of a better place.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Councilwoman Bridges?
Okay, thank you. I do have a question. Is there an equivalent of like a house mother in these homes? I noticed they have four bedrooms, and I'm looking at the kitchen, like, who's going to do the cooking? And, you know, how, what's the structure of a typical household like this when occupied?
Yes, thank you. Great question. So who will be cooking? Will be everybody, because in a home environment, everybody shares chores about cleaning and cooking. Yes, there will be a house parent assigned to each home, and they will be highly special, you know, they will have specialty training to care for child victims of trafficking. But every home will have a team of staff that will work in that home, from, you know, a lead in the home to a specialist in there, helping with behavior modification or different support services that might be needed. But like any other home, they will have to all negotiate who does laundry and takes out the trash, because that is really, over the 50 years of our services at St. Jude's Ranch for Children, that is one thing we have done very well, which is create a home-like environment for children, and we're really proud of that model.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. First is, in looking at the renderings, I know that you have a perimeter wall around the entire property, the 30-plus acres that is there, has a perimeter wall already. It does appear, though, you have you're anticipating building another wall around just these structures. Is that correct?
Yes. On the lower entrance that currently is exists, so there's a secondary entrance to that lowest part of the campus, there will be an additional retainer wall on the inside to create the interior perimeter wall, and then the exterior perimeter walls will likely be reinforced and/or heightened to accommodate for the new structure. So there will be some adjustments to the existing walls and then that interior one. There will be, of course, a parking lot available for any visitors, but we will put an interior wall just to be able to control who's coming and going on that part of the campus.
So that wall would be complete from the administration building all the way back around to the administration building? So only the administration building would be accessible?
Yes. Yeah. Is it possible for me to go back on the? Thank you. Let me, where do I point?
I'm just looking at what it appears to be in the renderings.
Oh, yeah, keep going to the main first, let's see, I think it's page number two. Yep, keep going. Yep, there. So it's a bit hard to tell, because I can't get too close to it, but you'll see that lower entrance from the street. You see right off to the right is the visitor part. Yes, perfect. Yes, the visitor parking area. From that point, all the way to the back of the campus, along that road, there will be an interior wall, all the way up to the top. And through the parking lot, there will only be access gates beyond that first orange building, the administration building. There will be access gates for emergency vehicles or, you know, controlled, you know, anybody that needs to come onto the campus. The rest of the wall is the perimeter wall around will not really be changed, other than if it needs to be heightened or reinforced. There are some dotted lines at 150 feet from that perimeter wall, and we anticipate putting some sort of gate, so that there's a fence within a fence, just so that we can use things like motion detectors and other forms of security on the interior wall, as well as the exterior wall. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Okay.
And again, based on what I can see in your renderings, I think I have it pretty clear in my mind, but, you know, it had been expressed earlier in public comment about whether there would be this type of interior wall, and that's what I saw in the renderings, that it is there.
Yes, there is intended to be. Yes, we are going to have an interior wall.
Okay. And then I had a couple of questions for Mr. Mays. The sales agreement, the original sales agreement from the city to St. Jude's Ranch talked about this master plan, and again, using a term like that, I know often gets confused with our city master plan, which also addresses certain aspects of building codes and things like that. This term that's within that sales agreement is not subject to the same type of process that amending our city master plan is. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And again, looking at the sales agreement, it appears that St. Jude's Ranch has the legal ability within that agreement to change that master plan as they believe is needed, and all we're doing is verifying whether the changes that they're proposing meet our building codes and any other codes that may apply. Is that also a correct understanding?
Correct, and ensuring that the continued development of the site is consistent with the institutional uses that was contemplated with the sale of the property.
And those uses are detailed in that sales agreement? Not detail, I shouldn't say, but generally described?
Well, simply put, it is specifically institutional and related uses.
Okay, so it's a fairly broad explanation of what the allowable use is there?
Correct.
I'll just make kind of a general comment. One, I appreciate the information and the outreach you've made to the community. You know, clearly, we've heard some public comment that there's concern, and I'm sure with anything of this nature, there would be concern. It appears to me that you are addressing some of the concerns that were mentioned earlier tonight, as far as the interior wall, heightening the perimeter wall if necessary. You know, I would just suggest, and this goes for the homeowners, I know you have reached out to the community, if there are concerns, I think, you know, you've already done a lot, but perhaps be willing to sit down with them. I'm not saying you haven't been in the past, but, you know, if the homeowners there have specific concerns, you know, get those to Ms. Vella here and let her try and work with you. I will also comment that, you know, this, St. Jude's was first started when I was in elementary school, and I remember quite well being told by my teacher that, you know, we're going to have some new children in school, and that we were to treat them the same way we would treat any other one of our fellow students. And she made that statement in such a way that it left an impression on me that she was serious about that, that these kids were going to be treated the same as others. And I know going through school, elementary, middle school, high school, a lot of these kids were very thankful that they had the opportunity to live here in Boulder City. We have a safe community. We have schools where students are able to excel, if they wish to do that. So I think that an institution like this is beneficial, not only for the children who go to live there and get care, but for our community as well. This particular area is very close to what was called McKeeversville when Hoover Dam construction was going on, and that area was essentially ragtown, a squatter's town. Folks that were either looking for a job or were able to get a job on the construction of Hoover Dam, lived in tents or lean-tos or whatever it was they could put together. And the name came from a person who had constructed a very crude baking oven there, and his name happened to be McKeever, and he sold bread. So that's how that area got named, was for McKeeversville. It was probably one of the most hardscrabble areas that allowed people to get jobs on the construction of Hoover Dam and improve their lives. So the location of this, I think, has also been very appropriate for Boulder City. With that, any other discussion by council? We do have a motion and a second.
I have one more, Mayor. For Michael Mays, the plans have, you know, a gate across it, and of course, we brought up gates recently in city council meetings. So can you explain the difference of why, you know, we don't allow gated communities and why this would be permitted?
That's a very good question. In the city code, it defines what a street is, and that's tied to the prohibition of gates across streets, both public and private streets. So the access road that will be serving this development is going to only be serving this development. In our city code, specifically for the definition of streets, it says, "A public thoroughfare which affords the principal means of access to abutting properties." So in this case, it's not an access that's serving multiple properties, and so it's not defined as a street, which ties back to the prohibition that says a gate cannot go across a public or private street.
Thank you for that clarification. One other question I had was, I think one of the renderings had the houses at about 3,000 square feet. Is that about what size it's going to be?
That's correct. One is about 3,200 square feet, and one is, I believe, 3,800 square feet.
Okay. And then what was the size of the administrative building and the multi-purpose building?
The multi-purpose building is 6,000 square feet, roughly. It might be 5,700. And the administration building, I believe, is 3,500 square feet.
Okay. So still kind of the same size of the houses?
Yes.
So it'd be, okay. And I just want to echo what Mayor McManus had said about kind of working together with the residents and this project that's going forward. I'm glad to hear that you have made some adjustments to your plans, as voiced by the citizens that live next to it, and I encourage both parties to continue to work that relationship as this is developed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, with that, then, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval of this?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move then to item number eight, Resolution 7054. Mr. Mays, again?
Last fall, the city took advantage of a new opportunity afforded to itself through its participation in the Certified Local Government Program, in that the city, as a CLG-designated community, could apply for grant funds for historic preservation efforts. The city applied to the Nevada State Historic Preservation Office for a grant that would help pay for the updates to the 1983 Janus Report, which is the survey of the city's historic district. The city received word that SHPO was awarding $33,000, paying for 100% of the costs, to use a third-party consultant to get this work completed. And so the agreement before you tonight memorializes that agreement between the city and SHPO.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Councilman Adams?
I would just, I think we talked about this in the briefing, but the award, the grant would expire on August 1st of 2020, is that correct?
Correct.
And so what is the timeframe that we're looking to complete this?
Before August 1st.
Right. I, thank you.
Just to clarify, with a consultant, Northwind, they understand the deadline, and with their scope, they are fully prepared to complete all of the work before August 1st.
Okay.
I have a question.
Councilwoman Bridges?
I'm sorry, yes. What is the purpose of the Janus Report? I mean, I understand what it is, but ultimately, what is the purpose of the Janus Report?
Well, and that's a very good question, because a lot of people in the community hear about the Janus Report and wonder what its origins were. The Janus Report was a consultant that was hired through a grant to survey historically significant properties within the community for the purpose for submitting an application to the National Register of Historic Places. And that was what was accomplished in 1983, and that's the reason why the entire historic district is registered with the National Register. That was also the basis for the creation of the city's Historic Preservation District. Because it's been so many years since that survey has been updated, in working with the Historic Preservation Committee, as well as in the evaluation of the city's strategic plan goals, it was important that we update this survey as the basis for some of the other historic preservation efforts.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of questions. The recommendation that I'm familiar with for doing these resurveys calls for this to be done about every 10 years. We have never done one since the original nomination was done, as far as I'm aware.
That's my understanding as well, yes.
Okay. Also, initially, I believe this grant program from the State Historic Preservation Office is for up to a 50% match, and in this case, because there was grant money available through that fund, they're funding this at 100%. Is that correct also?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion for approval?
I'd like to make a motion for approval of Resolution 7054 approving Agreement Number 208069.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Mays. We'll now move to item number nine, City Manager's Annual Report. Prepare to be dazzled by Mr. Noyola's facts and figures here.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and Council. Good evening, and good evening also to the residents of this wonderful community. I am Al Noyola, your city manager, and I am honored and very humbled to be here tonight to report on the progress that has been made over the last year. This annual report is a great way to share our achievements, but I also wanted to stop and kind of take note that there has been some changes that have occurred in this last year. One of the changes, as all are aware, is that we lost a very beloved member of the council in October. We lost a great man, Councilman Warren Harhey, and, you know, we continue to remember him and his participation and his example as a shining public servant. We also note that in this last year, it is not common to see a significant change in the leadership of an organization, a city council. Yes, every two years, there's normally elections, and not the whole council changes. Normally, it is one or two seats. Normally, it is one or two seats, roughly. But within a span of five months, unfortunately, we did see literally all five positions change, although there are four new faces, but all five positions actually changed. So that does obviously bring on some new opportunities, new ideas, in which staff is obviously embracing as we move forward. Also want to say that we have some of the hardest-working staff, I feel, in this great state. There are some great accomplishments that I'd like to share with you tonight, and that is what I would like to focus on, as well as what we're looking forward to in this new year. Nobody provided me training on how to work this, let's see here. Okay, first, let me start out with, as you are aware, over the last year, during the budget process, we asked for some additional resources in order for us to be able to generate some efficiencies, and those efficiencies hopefully would also generate into some substantial cost avoidance or cost savings to the city. I'm happy to report that, as you see here, we estimate about $10 million, either has or is in the process of being, of occurring as we speak. Just very quickly, I'll outline some of the major categories. In purchasing area, we've saved approximately 2.4 million in terms of how we structure our bids, how the bids are going out, how we're advertising those bids, and utilizing a much more larger, diverse market in which to place those bids in. In accounting, there was at least $121,000 in savings realized, or actually additional revenues realized, by taking certain kinds of money and reinvesting those to actually gain higher interest on the money that the city had in certain accounts. As all are aware, there was a $3.5 million savings by refunding or refinancing, if you will, the utility debt on the raw water line. In addition, we've received up to about $3.1 million in new revenues from solar leases, mostly, also some contract management, risk management, utility building, and the interest that we talked about just a minute ago. So on this slide, for those that are mathematicians, oh, that doesn't quite add up to 10 million. Let me turn the page. So on this slide specifically, I wanted to highlight positions that were authorized by the city council to be added. And we talked to the city council about, by bringing in certain types of contracted services, bringing those in-house, adding some additional resources, personnel, that we would actually be able to glean some savings. Here, we've highlighted some of those positions, and we've tried to look at the first six months, what those savings looked like, and then extrapolate that out for the whole year to see what this, you know, future year, if the trend continues, that we're likely to see up to about $865,000 in savings as we move forward, with the net as actually $381,000. What is not reflected on this slide, for those that are crunching the numbers, and still it doesn't add up to $10 million, it's $300,000 or so shy, is that, if you recall, there was an additional increase in revenues that were received by the city for ambulance transport services, and those revenues, the council did approve to utilize those to fund an additional three positions in the fire department to plus up the ability to have a partial or fully-running third ambulance rescue unit for the community. And that's approximately $10 million. I was going to say, next slide, I think I'm supposed to do this. So now, let's talk about specifically some of the highlights in the different departments. As you recall, throughout the year, each of the department heads did come up and talk about some of their accomplishments specifically. I'm not going to go through every single one of these line items, but just highlight a few things. In the Community Development Department, one of the big things that they have been challenged with was to ensure that we bring forward an economic development plan. We stood up a city manager-appointed Economic Development Strategic Advisory Board that assists, you know, myself in formulating recommendations on issues relating to economic stability for the city to ensure that we are covering all the gammas across the spectrum of Boulder City. It includes officials such as representatives from the health industry, representatives from the schools, representatives from the business, commercial sector, and so forth. So we have approximately 10 or 12 members throughout the community that sit on this panel and assist staff in reviewing and formulating recommendations as we move forward. Also, one of the things that you heard tonight was the acceptance of the grant. So historic preservation has been front and center in terms of this department's emphasis on what they were looking to do in this year as well. Suffice to say that, in addition to these, they continue to provide great and excellent customer service when it comes to all of those services that are rendered through their In the Finance Department, one of the things that maybe perhaps isn't so, shall we say, noticeable, or people really understand, is a significant upgrade to the financial software that the city has employed over the years. We've converted that up to the most recent, or the newest version available. It brought on additional features and additional capabilities for the staff to be able to do our finances and be able to report our finances in a much better way. The council will remember that during, in this year, we also recommended the addition of four additional funds in order to highlight and to have more financial-prudent management of our funds through segregating out funds specifically for vehicle replacement, revenue stabilization, extraordinary repairs, and compensated absences. In addition to that, I think we heard that this particular item was well-received by PoolPac and actually believes that this is one of the best practices statewide, and is encouraging all of their members throughout the state to also follow this lead as well. We talked about the money market sweep in terms of all the cash that we have to redirect those assets to be able to earn higher interest on those monies, and that has been producing very positive results. New solar leases that have come online this last year, centralized purchasing structure led to increased efficiencies. We talked about the bids in RFP, and also utilizing GovQuote, which actually increases the number of businesses that could in fact bid on our proposals as they were sent out or our bids. Also, real-time tracking of current capital improvement projects, and also completion of, again, the refunding. And again, let me just emphasize that that is a huge, huge benefit to the community. Not only did it save real dollars, but it also decreased the number of years that it's going to take to pay off this particular debt. In the Fire Department, as you know, we have been recruiting for a fire chief. Happy to report that we did select a new fire chief, who will be started before the end of this month. So we will be welcoming at the next council meeting the new fire chief. We talked about the three additional positions in the Fire Department, firefighters that were brought on in October to start staffing at least partially the third ambulance, so we can continue to provide ambulance response in a very efficient manner, particularly since we have to do much of the transporting outside of the valley. Oftentimes, we find that there is some lag time in being able to respond, so that third fire or third rescue unit is becoming very noticeable. We also will be accepting the new fire engine that the council approved last year. Expect delivery here very soon, and I physically did not actually see the pictures, but I was told there is a really nice, bright, shiny red vehicle that is just about ready to come to Boulder City, so that is good news. In addition, we also added the number of calls per service that we see in the Fire Department, and they continue to respond to those proactively. In the Police Department, one of the significant highlights this year is that they've really started focusing on homelessness, along with several other departments. In fact, as you are aware, there is a task force that, you know, several departments within the city that are attacking this very issue and coming up with recommendations on how to proceed forward. They also expanded their volunteer programs. Instead of adding paid staff, they're utilizing volunteers to assist with other programming as well. Animal shelter continues to be very active in the community. As you recall, there was that one incident, unfortunately, where there was about 50 animals, a hoarding situation, that was proactively handled by our animal shelter folks. And also, you can see that narcotic cases and seizures, we always have those. We always like to purport that it's getting less, and hopefully, what that means is that there is less criminal activity, but that may not necessarily be the case. But our police department is always proactive, looking at how to minimize a lot of the crime and criminal activity within our community. Parks and Recreation, a number of items here. Again, won't go through all the bullets, but suffice to say, there's been a number of increases in terms of new equipment, new recreational equipment that are being put either in the parks or in other areas, or updating of curtain equipment that exists to modernize, doing additional shade structures. We have a nice new little, well, I shouldn't say little, but I can't dribble a ball to save my life, but that basketball court is really nice-looking, so maybe I should go out there and try once or twice. But in addition to that, the skate park has refurbished new ramps, so now it's much safer for those that partake of that particular sport as well. In addition to that, you know, the Parks and Recs Department has chaired the Homeless Task Force, because the individual that is currently the chair is the one that has represented the city on Homeless Task Force issue as part of the overall Clark County Task Force that has been in place previously. So she continues to do that on behalf of the city, is also our city's task force and our primary, if you will, on the board for the AB 73. In addition to that, one of the other things that occurred was in order to try to diversify or increase revenues as it relates to the facilities associated with the golf course, there's land that was not available, and now there is additional recreation of disc golf course at the Boulder Creek Golf Course. I don't know, something about throwing something, I think it comes back, I don't know how that works, and I'm afraid to go out there and do that, it might come back and smack me. But anyway, apparently, it's getting, it's quite popular, and it's being utilized, and it is driving some additional new revenues. Next department that I want to highlight is Public Works. We wanted to, again, just reemphasize that there is a number of projects, not only that were completed this year, as you can see from the right-hand column, but there are other projects that are currently in construction, some phase of construction, as you can see on the left-hand side. I also want to reemphasize for the community, as well as the council, as you are aware, there's twice a year that you receive specific updates on all the projects, once every six months, from our Public Works Director, and are able to ask questions, you know, either at that time or any time for that matter. In addition to that, some of the projects are highlighted from time to time, either in the city manager memo that comes out twice a month, or they're also highlighted under the Public Works webpage on our city website. City Clerk's Office, again, a number of activities that go on each and every year. As you're aware, there was an election this year, so whenever there's election, there's a level of activity that occurs there. We also saw a significant increase in FOIA requests in this year as well. But let me just mention two things that really drive to transparency that affected the city clerk's office, and that is, by the direction of the city council, as you recall, there were two additional committees that were brought on, which require additional support from staff, additional minutes, so forth and so on, and so that drives, obviously, workload for the city clerk to be able to manage that. So we do have those two committees. If you recall, one is the Utility Advisory Committee, the other one is the Ad Hoc Pool Committee as well. In the City Attorney's Office, again, you know, we do have ongoing workload in the Criminal Division as well as the Civil Division. One of the things that, you know, to highlight is that more and more contracts have been instituted in this last year. All contracts must go through the City Attorney's Office for review for legal form and sufficiency. So there's been a significant amount of increase in workload in that area, along with the other area of risk management. The municipal courts, as you are well aware, there was a completion of construction of the addition to the courthouse. Also, breaking the cycle, Recovery Court graduated four participants during this fiscal, this past fiscal year, a total of 21 graduates to date. One of the things that I do want to highlight in this area is, we talk about I-11 and the effects of I-11, and how does that affect the resources that we have as a community in trying to support that, because, you know, quite honestly, we don't see county, we don't see the state always there 24/7. So I will say that with the judge and with the city attorney, we are still quantifying the effects of I-11 on court and city attorney services. That workload does appear, at least initially from the review of the data, to have increased, and the increases are significant when we look at citations, as well as incidences that have been brought into our system along the I-11 corridor. So we will probably be briefing at some point in the future about what that actually looks like. In addition to some of the highlights of some of those departments, I also want to just briefly talk about information flow improvements. As you know, one of the things that we wanted to make sure that happens is that we increase the information, not only to the council, but also to the community as a whole. So now, we do have, as of this year, recording of all committees and council meetings. Those are able to be viewed on the city website and also on YouTube. Website redesign was launched July 1, I believe, and we are still tweaking that, so as we get additional comments, suggestions for improvements, if those are things that can be added and there is value added, we certainly look to improve those as well. And as you know, that more and more social media is being used as the media, the preferred media for communication, for information sharing, and we continue to expand and utilize those avenues as well. Looking forward into 2020, two things that I really want to talk about that I think will take us to the new level of both transparency and our ability to react to customer inputs. First is the Open Finance Portal. This particular portal, Socrata is the name of the software, was launched at the end of December, and I think the first week of January, after most everyone got back from vacation, there were some news releases that went out. This is Dashboard for Transparency. It highlights the revenues as they are collected and fund allocations, and also, based on the information that community would like to see, it will produce some automated charts, if you will, based on the type of information that you would like to see. You're not able to change the actual data in terms of what is in the system, but you can certainly ask to view it in a manner that, you know, perhaps maybe is, you know, best, or that you can interpret in the best shape or fashion. The other software that I want to talk about is called See Click Fix. This one is one where an individual, it's web-based, and it is used for filing of any maintenance, property concerns, code complaints, and the like. And it's included, or we can actually take information from smartphones, and it's actually designed to be able to use with those portable devices, so that you can take a picture, you can pinpoint your location, and then send that in to See Click Fix, which will be located on our website, and then that way, we know exactly where it is, that pothole or that issue is, that you're wanting the city to take a look at. So we're looking to move that forward in the spring of 2020, that will add a new level of customer access to the city in terms of identifying and reporting issues and concerns. Finally, want to just quickly talk about objectives, as your city manager, that I will be focusing on on 2020. As you are well aware, and I think some of you may have brought your own version of the forklift to be able to bring- the forklift to be able to bring in and start reviewing the draft of the Stand Tech Facility Study. So we are looking that in 2020, that we will start looking at any recommendations or what the council will approve in terms of moving forward as far as facilities, facilities, maintenance, safety, and security. I will be looking to continuing to build the morale of the city leadership and city staff through ongoing efforts that have been going on for at least the past two years, and other efforts as well, to make sure that our employees feel that they are valued at every step of the way, that what they do matters, and they do affect this community. We want to make sure that we continue to communicate, communicate, communicate. If I can speak other languages, well, I can speak one more. You know, if that's how we need to do that, we can certainly try to see if we need to do that. But the key here is that we need to make sure that the word gets out, so the community understands what it is that their government is doing. Expansion of excellent customer service. We will be adding weekend hours. One of the concerns is that many municipalities are on a 4:10 schedule, which basically, most of the work is done Monday through Thursday, and it appears that City Hall is closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. There are some services that are ongoing, it's kind of behind the scenes, you know, police, fire, that sort of thing, they're there 24/7. But what we will be doing is, we will be bringing in some support, where there will be an actual person that will be sitting at the police department records window, that will be able to actually answer phone calls as they came in on Fridays and Saturdays during the normal hours. In addition to that, be able, if someone comes in and has a question, or how to fill out a form or whatnot, that that individual will be able to assist them. If they don't have the answers, they will have a list of, you know, quick contact individuals that they could call to get the information right then and there, and if not, they can take a message, and we can get back to the customer. We will continue to emphasize historic preservation programs and planning. That is high on the priority list, specifically, obviously, for our Community Development Department, but really, it touches many of other departments as well, so there will be ongoing support there citywide. Also, review of administrative policies to ensure that we minimize any conflicts between administrative policies, city ordinances, the charter, and Nevada revised statutes. And then finally, continuation of the council's strategic plan by providing the update on the progress as we move forward. So with that, council members, thank you very much, and if you have any other questions that I may answer, I'm here.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Councilman Adams?
We talked a lot about the Homeless Task Force. There obviously has been a lot of movement on that recently. We've seen it literally impacting individual lives. There was the matter of Mr. Roman being removed from the mine at it. There's talks of camp cleanups, things like that. Being that we are starting to move into this area where we are impacting people, do you see in the near future, the Homeless Task Force giving a report to City Council on the work that has been done, and if so, when do you think we would see that?
I believe that is tentatively scheduled to be presented to the council in February. I'm just not, don't recall if it was the first or second meeting in February.
January.
January? January, I'm being correct.
Even better, even better.
There you go.
You also mentioned the skate park. I personally heard from a lot of people who use that, they are thrilled with the new ramps that have been revamped, I like to say revamped ramps. There's also a lot of discussion about the light. I know it's something that we have discussed before. Are we still looking forward to new lighting for that area?
We are, and I believe that that is either in the CIP, or that is as part of the building improvement facilities. I'm looking at my Public Works trackers, I'm not sure where that was being addressed, but it is being addressed.
I just don't want to upset a...
No.
Upset those skateboarders and bikers. And then my last question here, and this one might be a little tricky, so if you don't have the answer, I understand, but with that See It, Click It, Fix app application, that's not an application that the city itself is developing, correct?
That is not. It's actually a software that's available. Many, many municipalities across the nation utilize that.
And are you aware of what personal data might be collected by this application? If the city would be collecting any of that data, if the company that developed would be collecting any of that data? I understand if you don't have those answers now, it just kind of came to me when I was looking.
I don't have that answer.
It might be good that we do start to get those answers, so that the community, if they wish to use it, we can, you know, they have that information.
Other questions or comments? Councilwoman Hopkins?
Yes, I was going to ask the same question about the phone, the security of it. If you can get that, that'd be fine, thank you.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Bridges?
I just want to say, I really liked that See It, Click It, Fix It. As I was riding my bicycle today, there was graffiti on a wall on Georgia, and I thought to myself that, as soon as you said that, that would be the perfect opportunity to take a picture of it, have it located, and submit that online to, because then you get home, and it's like, oh yeah, I have to make that call.
And you're absolutely right. That's a perfect example of how that's utilized. The other nice thing about this is not, it's not just taking a picture and sending it in, but now it creates a record, and so staff will be tracking that until it closes. And I believe there's a way and a mechanism by which we communicate back to the originator of who sent that in, to let them know that it's been taken care of.
Great. Thank you. Also, thank you for putting Socrata on the front page. It was a little complicated trying to figure out who owned it, you know, where, we had to dig to find it, and having it right up front is great. That's it.
Councilwoman Folda?
Okay. So, also, I'm excited for the app. I'll just get it all out there, too. So we all are happy about the app. Because I recently experienced, you know, a water main leak that I saw, and it's like, how do I go, what do I do? And it was after hours, so we ended up calling dispatch, but it was handled very well by Public Works, and so I just thank you for everyone. Utilities actually would have done that, yep. But then the road was cut up, too, so Public Works did, it was a multi-use fix. But also, that there's a lot of, a lot of these things are implemented because of staff looking at different things. You know, the Open Finance Portal, for example, you know, was brought forward because of training, I believe, and to really get that, things out there that are more transparent for the public to be able to see, not only be able to call things in, or, you know, use the app to get things to the city, have someone here to staff, you know, for questions on the weekends, and having our website more open and usable, friendly. I think this is, you know, linear, taking away that gap that we had of communication with citizens versus administrative, and I congratulate all the staff that are working really hard to do that. I had one question, you brought up the fire department, how we added a partial third ambulance staff. Do they have, or do they go by statistics as far as when's the best time to staff those hours, what are the high use hours, things like that?
They do. If you recall, I believe it was last year during the budget process, that the previous fire chief did have some analysis about not only call volume that justified that we had more than, you know, enough, we had more call volume than just two rescue units going constantly, and there was a range of when those particular call volumes tend to be higher, within a 24-hour period on average. So obviously, that is something that, you know, we leave to the fire chief as the head to review that and figure out when is best to staff that currently, and I'm going to look at our interim fire chief, but I believe that the way that we're currently handling that is that we actually have three rescue units that are currently running 24/7.
The third is reserved dependent.
It's reserved dependent, so as long as we have the staff available, those additional three, or the reserve firemen, the reserve firemen would be moving that ambulance or that rescue unit and operating that, so long as we have the staff available.
Okay, thank you. I just want to, thank you to all the staff for all the hard work that they do, so, thanks.
And I would also like to thank the staff for that. Having been the old man of the council now, with two and a half years under my belt, several of these things were ideas that I had discussed over that period of time. The reporting system, I think, again, is an excellent idea, something that I had talked about for some time. I do share Councilman Adams' concerns with these applications. I'm assuming that if somebody takes a picture, the way that anybody's going to know what that is a picture of is because of the geodata that is usually embedded in that picture, depending on how somebody has their phone set up. There's a lot of private data that gets pulled out of those phones, and I think Mr. Adams has an excellent point there, that we need to know what is happening with that and where that data's going before we just say, hey, folks, download this, and everything will be wonderful. And then on a broader scale, Councilman Adams had touched on this, too, that with issues like the homelessness, or many of these other issues, the City Council needs to be advised so that we can determine what the policy is that will be implemented in the city. If actions start to be taken that essentially are implementing new policies, then that takes the City Council out of the picture. And I think it's important that when we do these things, that rather than just starting down a path, that the information be given to council in a manner that the City Council has an opportunity to think about it, not just four or five days on an agenda, but an opportunity to really consider what these actions are going to entail, especially with an issue like homelessness. We are seeing decisions be made. The United States Supreme Court just rejected an appeal from the Ninth Circuit Court. We are in the Ninth Circuit Court area that has far-reaching impacts on how those types of issues are being handled. The City of Las Vegas is embarking on what they feel is an appropriate response to the issues. Clark County is the governmental agency that is, well, I'll be careful about this, because I don't want to make any county commissioners mad at me, but who has the responsibility? And they provide family services, social services, those types of things. So, you know, this is a situation especially that involves a wider range, and many of us sit on various boards and commissions that deal with these issues at that level and might have some other insights. So, again, I appreciate the work that staff is doing. I see real progress. You mentioned transparency earlier. I know it was something that I had requested, and later found out Councilman Adams was also looking for videotaping, not just the City Council meetings, but all of our public committees and commissions, and having that information put up on YouTube, which is a readily available source for folks. So I think we're seeing some good things happen, and I appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Mayor and council, if I could just make a comment about the homelessness issue. I just want to make sure that, you know, for the benefit of the public, that the city still is responsible, even though there is not a policy per se, if you will, from the council, we still have an obligation to act if there is the health and safety of individuals or the community as a whole does come forward. And in this particular instance, even though we are, as a city internally, looking at recommending policies to move forward, as you are aware, this became something that we found during this process. We are not implementing new policy. We are addressing safety and security issues, both that affect the individuals that, you know, were in those encampments, but also the city as a whole, to minimize risk and liability and exposure for the city. But going forward, in order to be more open, transparent, and very crystal about the policy of the council, that is what is going to be brought forward to you next council meeting, in which you will be able now to further weigh in on any ordinances, recommendations, any other policies in terms of the homelessness and that particular program, and the stance that the city will take. But I just want to make sure that, you know, that there's no inference that we are moving forward without the council's approval. We do have, as a city, an obligation to ensure the safety and security of all individuals, regardless of whether they're citizens that live in a home or citizens that are out in the desert.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move then to item number 11, council appointments. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. The first appointment is to the Clark County School District Oversight Panel. The Oversight Panel for School Facilities was created in 1997 by an act of legislature, and the panel consists of 11 members. Six members are elected officials, a Clark County Commissioner and City Council representatives from Boulder City, Las Vegas, Henderson, Mesquite, and North Las Vegas. The Board of School Trustees appoints the other five committee members. This panel examines and makes recommendations for financing the cost of new construction, design, maintenance, and repair of school facilities. This panel had been inactive for quite some time, but my understanding is they're going to start meetings again in the spring, so they've asked for us to appoint a member. Councilmember Walker was the last member to serve on this committee, so it has been a while. So I'm asking that the council appoint one of its members to this committee, and it meets as needed.
Thank you. Well, we can open up for nominations on this. I do know that Councilwoman Folda is already serving on these, what are they called, the Community Education Advisory Board?
That board's been inactive for a couple of years.
Yes.
Okay. Again, if you would like to also pursue this for the education issues, I'd be happy to nominate you for it.
Okay. I wouldn't have an objection to that.
All right. Any other nominations? All right, I will move to close nominations for that. Do we need a vote when we only have one nominee?
Well, if you move to close nominations, I at least need a second intervote on that, then we're taking...
Second.
Okay, all in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed?
She's appointed by acclamation, thank you.
Thank you.
Workfor, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Workforce Connections, the local elected consortium committee. This committee oversees primary workforce connections board activities, such as the appointment of board members, fiduciary responsibilities over local area resources, budget approvals, and the coordination of interlocals. This committee meets the second Tuesday of every other month at 1:00 p.m. This appointment is available due to the passing of Councilmember Harhey. He had served as the city's representative on this committee for the past two years. So once again, we need one council member to be appointed to this committee, please.
Thank you. Again, I'll open the nominations. I know that Councilwoman Hoskins has already indicated to me that as the replacement for Councilman Harhey, she would be happy to take that on, so I will nominate her. Any other nominations? Then I will move to close nominations. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second.
All in favor of closing?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Number three.
Councilmember Hoskins is also appointed by acclamation.
Thank you.
Item C is the Southern Nevada Health District Advisory Board Member. This was a, this was a committee that was created as a result of the 2015 legislative session, SB Senate Bill 314, which kind of restructured the Health District Board. And this advisory board, each of the municipalities has the authority to select one citizen member. As I explained in briefings, the requirement is that you're a citizen of the city that's being represented. In the past, the council has appointed a fellow councilperson, but the way it reads as citizen, there's nothing against appointing a councilmember, apparently, because it didn't get booted, but the council can choose a citizen if it so desires. This board consists of one resident of each city and the county selected by the governing body of each city. They, the members serve as non-voting... of each city. They, the members serve as non-voting members of the District Board of Health, and it meets at least quarterly. In 2019, the board met in January, April, July, October, and it met the second Monday of the month at 8:30 a.m. So Councilmember Schuman was the city's representative from 2015 to 17, and Councilmember Harhey served from 2017 to 19. So I'm, we did receive a resume of a citizen that was forwarded to you by email and is also available for the public, for you to consider as well.
Thank you. Again, I will move to, or excuse me, I will open nominations then. Anyone wishing to offer a nomination? Councilman Adams?
Yeah, I wanted to nominate Mr. Paul Klaus. I actually had spoken with him over the weekend. When I saw this appointment, I reached out to members in the community that I know were involved in the public health field. So when he sent me this resume, I requested that it be given out. He recently retired from the Health District. He has almost 30 years of experience in the public health field. I know traditionally we have appointed other council members, and I'm not necessarily opposed to that as kind of serving as a stepping ladder for sitting on the board. But sitting on the Board of Health, I know that there are a tremendous amount of issues that we are facing, and I think having somebody with the institutional knowledge that Mr. Klaus has could be a great benefit to us. So I will nominate him.
Any other names for nomination? Okay, I'll move to close nominations.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we will move to our last position then.
The last position is to fill the vacancy of the Municipal Pool Ad-Hoc Committee that was left as a result of Matt D. Teresa being appointed to the Planning Commission. So the Municipal Pool Ad-Hoc Committee consists of seven, seven members in addition to the mayor and mayor pro tem. The requirements are that the members should have experience in competitive swimming events or recreational swimming events, finance and/or general construction. And so we just need one, the interested parties were included in your packet. And because, I mentioned this in briefings also, because this is not considered a permanent board, you can serve on this board if you serve on another committee with the exception of the Planning Commission. So that's why Matt had to resign, because if you serve on the Planning Commission, you cannot serve on any other board.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open nominations then. Councilwoman Bridges?
I would like to nominate Katie Tyler.
Okay, any other names for nomination?
I, I would like to nominate Valerie McNeigh.
Any other names? See if we can make this complicated. Okay, I will close nominations, and we should then vote on these one at a time.
Yes, please.
So.
Second.
Oh, excuse me.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor then of closing nominations?
Aye.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Tyler. All those in favor of Ms. Tyler, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we'll move to Ms. McNeigh. Any in favor of Ms. McNeigh, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that makes it three to two then. Selection is for, excuse me, Dr. McNeigh.
Thank you.
We'll move then to the City Manager Report.
All matters under this item are routine in nature and no other report.
Okay, any questions or comments from the council? Okay, we'll move then to our last public comment period. During this public comment period, you may speak on any issue you would like. Again, the period of time is five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in public comment?
Hello, councilmembers and mayor. I'm Brad Ginnon. I recently started a nonprofit volunteer group to help people in Boulder City clean up their yards. It was kind of my way of paying back the community for keeping me in business 28 years. That's why I want you guys to know that we exist, and if you know of anybody that needs our help, we've helped out several people in town already. But we need to get word out that we're here to help them. So that's why I'm trying to get as much help as I can from the churches, senior center, lend a hand, everybody. I want this to be a community event because Boulder City, where family takes care of family, is what it's all about. We've got sponsors that I'm putting all over the backs of the shirts, and that helps finance us to get materials for other people. It's great to get our young kids involved. We had five boys between eight and 12 raking up leaves, and they actually had fun doing it and wanted to do more. So I want to try to get that going. One of the jobs we did, one neighbor didn't know anything about the other neighbor and lived there two and a half years. After we got done doing the yard, they met her, and the next week they put a bunch of tree bark all along between the sidewalk and the street to make her place look nicer. That's what it's all about, is letting people know that sometimes people are in a bad situation and just need a little extra hand. That's all. And that's what we're here for, coming together. And also, too, I want to try to raise more money so we can help out individuals in a higher aspect. I tell people if they know somebody that they want to really help out, to sponsor and raise the money, and we'll all come in as a team. I'm working on a house right now, and France Framing helped out, and we're having several other people, block people, Parsons, Lowe's, Home Depot, all of them are helping so we can make this house handicap-friendly. This person's, you know, has a little bit of a disability, so we're trying to make it better for them. And I can talk about it more. Clean Green Boulder City Yard Squad Volunteer Group. It's a long name. I did not think of it at the time. I just figured Clean Green Boulder City, which was started in 1931 by the first mayor, and then Yard Squad Volunteer Group is, I just pulled it up. I just thought it sounded good. Unfortunately, I put it all together, and it's on everything. So I'm trying to change it to B.C. Yard Squad Foundation. So, but that takes a lot of work and a lot of legal work that I don't know anything about. So I could play in the dirt really well. So I'm asking anybody with extra knowledge, know how to get grants, do paperwork. I'm keeping everything as organized as I can, but I, I'm not good with it. You know, I, I know my abilities and what they are and aren't. So any questions on us from you guys?
Again, this is public comment period, but I would just say, you know, we did the Bill Andrews Award earlier tonight, and Mr. Bachhuber talked about how volunteerism here in Boulder City is what makes this such a great town. You're certainly an example of that. Thank you.
And when I heard about Bill Andrews Award, I thought that was great. He actually helped me get into my very first house. He was a mentor to me.
See.
So that was, I was impressed when I heard that.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, guys, and give us a holler if you need help.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Tom, Mr. Tyler?
Thank you. Tom Tyler, I'm the current president of Emergency Aid, and I wanted to remind everybody that we're in a historic building that's been under study for a couple of years now for a different use. I've still heard no effort for any other location, and I would like to hope that you still support us in maintaining that building for Emergency Aid. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Ms. DeShane?
Judy DeShane. I received something on my Facebook yesterday, I believe it was, that listed the various meetings that were coming up for the month of January, and I noticed it missed the Park and Recreation one that is January 27th. So I don't know who does that, but I wish they would go back, reissue it, and include the Park and Recreation. Back in September, we had a Park and Recreation meeting on 9/23, and it never got put out on the website. They finally put it out October 21st, which was long past the 30 days that it was supposed to be. So we did have an open meeting violation, but I noticed nobody notices it. So it's only if you send it to the state does it make a difference. And of course, it wasn't against the council either. It was whatever goes on in the city and who the hell knows. So I, that, I found it rather upsetting. I just do. I also, from what I see in the paper, what I observe here at council, and what I see on Facebook, we have a very huge disconnect between the city manager, city attorney, and the council members. It's very obvious, and I'm thinking that maybe it's time for the council to review whether or not it's time to change the upper management. It is something that you guys control. One of them signed their contract 2/27/18. The other one was 2/28/18. And if you decide to replace the management, I encourage you to do it before that because if we do it before that, it's under two years, and we only have to pay them six months of everything instead of nine months. So it would, the strategic plan on fiscal responsibility and managing money, we'd save money on that because it'd only be six months instead of nine. So I would encourage the council to think about maybe putting that on and take a close look at whether this is the right management team to go with our council. The council was just recently elected, so we're looking at four years for some of you and two years for the rest of you. But we really need to get this situated, this situation straightened out because it hurts the community and it hurts, I'm sure, certain employees probably feel the wrath a little bit, too. If somebody at the top is pissed off, it goes downhill. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Hey, seeing no others, we'll close the final public comment period and move to item 14, council reports. We will start with Councilwoman Folda.
I have nothing to report.
Councilwoman Bridges?
I have nothing to report.
Councilwoman Hoskins?
I have something to report. I attended the 60th birthday party on January 4th, and I would like to acknowledge and thank those involved in making it a success. The pastor of the Calvary Chapel, Jason King, and his members, Chamber CEO Jill Legan, Mike Passini, Bill Reiki, Representative Suzie Lee, and our great historian Dennis McBride, who spoke about the history of our great city, and also Albertson's, who made a wonderful cake. And I would also like to thank someone else. I attended a meeting on Wednesday last week. It was brought to my attention that the city was using Roundup on our parks. On Thursday, I spoke with Keegan, our Public Works Director, and by Thursday afternoon, Keegan issued an email that stated he placed a moratorium on the use of Roundup until they can evaluate it. I am so pleased with this quick response, and I want to thank him personally for that. It is, means a lot to me since I've had several friends and family members pass, which they thought may be due to the Roundup or pesticides. So I thank you very much for that.
Councilman Adams?
Yeah, this morning, I actually had my first meeting with the Nevada League of Cities. I teleconferenced in. It was a little hard sometimes on the phone call to pick up everything that was being said, but Warren Hardy gave us a kind of a breakdown of what's happening at the legislation. There were a couple of other issues, one in West Windover, some of those things that they were looking for support on. But one of the big things, obviously, is moving forward with the league, kind of getting it back on track. So I'm hoping good things are coming. By the sound of it, it sounds like it. So I'm hoping that next time I can actually be present at the meeting so we can start making those connections and building that relationship. I was also at the 60th birthday party. It was a ton of fun. I really do enjoy those sorts of things. It's always great to celebrate Boulder City. And then I would just like to announce I've been getting a lot of questions and requests about different things that are coming up here in Boulder City. I'm going to be at, I'm going to do a coffee with the councilman, kind of in honor of what Mr. Harhey used to do. I'm going to be at the company store from 1:00 to 3:00, having, having coffee. So if anybody has any questions about the happenings that are going on, I'd be more than happy to talk about that then, so. That was this Saturday, the, yeah, this coming Saturday. Yep, I believe the 18th, is that correct? From 1:00 to 3:00.
Thank you. And I'll just say, you know, as the prior person serving on the League of Cities Board, I'm glad to hear that, that they are getting reconstituted. It seemed that activity had fallen off with them. There are a lot of small towns here in the state of Nevada, and an organization like the League of Cities is very important to our interests before the legislature. We kind of get overshadowed by Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, Henderson, Reno, Sparks. It, we really need an organization like that, so I'm glad to hear that they're getting back up and running. I was at a meeting this morning for the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority. The NFL draft is coming to Las Vegas, in case you haven't heard. The Boring Company is halfway on their first tunnel under the Convention Center facility. That's quite an operation there. Once it gets all the way to where it's supposed to go on the other end of Paradise there, they pull it out and bring it back and do the second tunnel. So it's, I think they said they're over 2,000 feet now that they've bored since November. And the expansion at the Convention Center, this week there is not a convention, so that means the traffic around Paradise and Desert Inn's not too bad. You really ought to go by and take a look at how that expansion is shaping up. It's just an awesome building that they're constructing there. And with that, I will close that, and Councilwoman Hoskin has one more thing to say.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about Thursday night.
Oh, I believe I will be speaking at Boulder Creek for the state of the city. I hope that all that are interested will come and hear what I have to say about that, but I think the news is pretty good for Boulder City, as the city manager pointed out earlier this evening. And with that, okay, well, let's keep it going then.
Okay. I'm RSVPing. I'll be there.
Yes, I did hear that the, the voicemail box was full over the weekend of folks RSVPing, so. All right, with that, I believe we are now adjourned then. Thank you all for coming tonight. Yeah, you forgot to tell me.